Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time. I'll get started immediately so that I'm not wasting it. My name is Melvin Edgerson, Chairman of the Planning and Economic Development for the City Council. I believe that we are joined with my colleague on the committee as well, Councilor Maria Perez. And I believe I see Councilor Zaida Govan as well, join this as well. And I do recognize Head of Cities Planning and Economic, Tim Sheen is here. Amanda Pham and the two gentlemen, if you'd like to introduce yourselves and I apologize if I should know who you are.
Quite all right. I'm Tim Brangle with Chicago Consultant Studio, working with with Tim and Amanda and Jeff on a renewal and the master planning of downtown.
Okay.
Jeff Faster with the BSC Group and my main focus is working on Amendment 12 for the Court Square Urban Renewal Plan.
Thank you. Amanda, I'm going to just, if you, I think probably most appropriate that if you just try to take charge and or either you or Tim and start your presentation and my thanks to all of you for your attendance and particularly to my colleagues on the council.
Well, thank you for the time. Also, we're coming back to you with a little bit more detail on the Amendment Number 12, as well as the consolidation of the plan, putting together a cohesive approach for downtown Springfield, incorporating two planning areas that we had previously discussed. Just to align the vision as well as provide design guidelines and expectations. So I hope that this consolidation allows for an easier review for redevelopers when they're looking to perform activities downtown and redevelopment efforts. Tim Sheen, would you like to add anything else? If not, I know we have a presentation to provide an overview.
No, I'd rather get right into it in respect of everybody's time. Thanks.
I agree.
Jeff? Yep, let me call it up. Are you in play mode, Jeff?
There you go. Perfect. Yeah, just to jump right in again, I know we gave you a briefing a little while ago when this was all in the works. You now have in front of you and will have the daunting task of reviewing still a large document, but one that I think is much more user friendly and condensed from before. Just as a reminder, the real impetus behind it is aligning the urban renewal plan with your a lot of the current planning that's going on in downtown, particularly the Northeast Downtown District, as well as the Main Street and Convention Center District, master plans that were done over the last year, year and a half. Those are the driving force behind what you're going to see, what you have seen in the document in terms of overall boundary expansions, the need to expand, obviously, you know, in the blast zone, there's an area of need. Also, the languishing areas around MGM, there's an area of need. And so it's important to bring these back to you. But the reason for showing is really just to say, these are what you're going to see then in terms of all of the maps and exhibits that are driving a lot of, a lot of the urban renewal updates. And so with that, I'll let Jeff take you through it and then we could get into some conversation and questions.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Amanda, and all attendees. I'm going to, what I want to do is give an update from our last presentation to you, really focus on the actions that are being proposed in the Court Square Urban Renewal Plan Amendment Number 12. And first of all, as Tim Brangle mentioned, it really is a focus on bringing in a lot of the recommendations that were produced in two plans for downtown. One was the Northeast District, Northeast Downtown District Master Plan, which is basically in the area of the blast zone. And the other was for the Main Street Convention or Main Street Convention District Plan or the Master Development Plan for downtown in the area of the Convention Center, the Casino and Court Square. So as you'll see in this diagram here, one of the actions being proposed in Amendment 12 is an expansion of the current Court Square Urban Renewal Plan area, which is outlined in blue. We are proposing to expand it in those areas outlined in yellow with the buff color to really bring in the actions from those two master plans into the urban renewal program, which gives the SRA a lot of additional tools to help facilitate economic investment job creation in these areas of the downtown. In addition, we have identified what we call project activity areas. And this plan there shown in light blue with a dash blue line around them. Those are intended to, again, emphasize the recommendations and the actions from the two master plans that Tim showed earlier and I referenced earlier. Even though a number of activities will take place throughout the Court Square Urban Renewal Area, the really the emphasis of Amendment 12 is, one, the consolidation of all the prior amendments, but bringing in the actions, recommendations of these two master plans to really build upon previous momentum, but still address some of the deficiencies in the downtown area. Speaking of that, this map here shows in grays the vacant buildings, vacant parcels or underutilized parcels in these two activity areas. So if you kind of stand back and squint a bit, you can see in the Northeast District area, there's a lot of gray. Obviously, that was the area of the blast zone. There are still a number of vacant buildings and parcels up there as well as underutilized buildings and also surface parking lots, which we may not need to use that much surface space for parking and especially in a downtown area where structured parking structures tend to exist, there might be an opportunity to add structured parking so that more land area could be devoted to buildings. And the same is in the Activity Area 12A, which is the Main Street Convention District area. You'll see some gray areas there, again, vacant buildings or parking lots that we certainly want to fill up. So those are some of the reasons why these project activity areas were identified. And these are the reasons why many of the actions being proposed in Amendment 12 are in the plan to help identify these underperforming or vacant parcels or buildings. So looking at those vacant areas and not all of them are vacant, but looking at where economic investment opportunities exist, we have identified this plan here, which is potential acquisition. And I want to emphasize potential, just because a parcel is identified here as a potential acquisition, doesn't mean it will be acquired. It means that the redevelopment authority would have the ability to acquire a parcel at some point over the life of the plan, which is being proposed to go to 2050. So for the next 28 years or so, if there's a need, an opportunity or a parcel becomes available, the redevelopment authority would be able to purchase that parcel. And we, these days, we prefer to do those purchases, we meaning redevelopment authorities, through negotiated acquisition, not through eminent domain, but certainly eminent domain is a possibility. Excuse me. So the light buff colored parcels are ones that are being, new acquisitions being proposed in Amendment 12. Again, if and only if they're needed. The yellowish color ones are acquisitions that were approved in prior plan amendments that the redevelopment authority has not acquired, so they still have the ability to acquire those parcels. That's why you'll see the two different colors here. But if you look at it in totality, these are the parcels that the redevelopment authority would have the ability to acquire if and when the need for that is necessary to really advance an economic agenda or investment or project in these areas. Of those parcels being proposed for acquisition, some of them have buildings on them. And this plan here shows a few of those buildings that it may be best that they be demolished if the parcel was acquired and redeveloped. And that's because either they are older buildings that have been kept up and really can't meet current needs for a new user. Or they may be one-story buildings and zoning allows higher buildings and there might be an ability to put a more dense development on some of these areas if these older buildings were demolished and something taller was built in their place. But you will see of all the parcels identified as kind of priority parcels or potential acquisition parcels. There, a lot of them have buildings on them is shown in yellow here that are being proposed for rehabilitation. So we're trying to retain the old building stock where possible. Most, many of these buildings are 100 plus years old and have some interesting architectural features and really contribute to the character of the downtown as well as the project activity area in which they're located. Or they may be, you know, in fairly good condition. And rehab is necessary to kind of get them over the hump and get some new uses in there that really add vitality and activity in the downtown area. So that's why demolition is not proposed because they have a number of attributes to them that we would like to keep moving forward. Another action being proposed in the Urban Renewal Plan is zoning. And I'll just show this map briefly. This is the current zoning in downtown. And all you really need to focus on is the light blue that's on the left side and upper side of the screen, which is industrial A. The next plan shows the proposed zoning, which the main change is changing the it's a proposal to change, sorry. It doesn't automatically change it, but it's a recommendation that the industrial zone be changed to business B to provide more flexibility of uses, residential uses and be more consistent with the rest of downtown. And this was also an objective and goal of the Urban Renewal Plan along through the years was that downtown have consistent zoning for mixed use within the downtown area, basically providing a lot of different, excuse me, activities and uses. One thing that has been in the prior amendments to the Urban Renewal Plan that we found when we started doing the consolidation was a number of urban design objectives for downtown. And the ability for the redevelopment authority to review projects to adhere to these objectives and urban design guidelines. So we have made that very, we've consolidated that, made it very clear what the objectives are and what the guidelines are. So it's much more user friendly for a developer to come in and see what's expected of them when proposing a new project or rehab, rehabilitating a building in the downtown area. And it also helps the staff be able to point to a section of their renewal plan that really defines the redevelopment authority's role and how to review those particular projects and the urban design elements of those projects. And I'm not going to read all these objectives here, but we're really looking at, as we talked about earlier, preservation of rich and important architectural elements, active activating the street level within the downtown, so active uses at the street level, pedestrian space along the streets, comfortable circulation, visual connections between areas and certainly a strong connections to the Union Station Intermodal Center because transit oriented development, which is the TOD acronym at the end here, is certainly something the city could take advantage of having that Union Station amenity here and it making it convenient for people to live in downtown and use the various forms of public transit to get to wherever they may need to get to, to live, work or play. And those were objectives on the previous slide. This talks about specific guidelines that are in the plan. And again, it, the guidelines give specific recommendations of what a developer or investor needs to do where they're building a new property or rehabilitating an existing building. And that outlines the process of how the redevelopment authority staff will review those projects and what they will be looking for. And as you can see here, the Willy's Building is an example we put in this plan. It had a rich architectural history to hit, to it. And it has been rehabilitated, really that active ground floor use, preservation of the architecture of the building, retaining the character as well as the history and culture of how that building had been used over the years. So it's a good test case to highlight. There are a number of other actions in the Urban Renewal Plan. And one of the key ones is the first one here, it gives the redevelopment authority the ability to partner with existing organizations, property owners, businesses, potential investors to help facilitate a deal that would result in economic investment in the area. And then some of these other things we've already talked about, but it's also the ability of the redevelopment authority to invest in the public realm areas, public infrastructure. Really so saying the city's putting their money where their mouth is and making improvements to their real estate assets downtown, whether it be streets, sidewalks, open space areas, parks, et cetera. All this comes at a cost and the state makes us pull together a financial plan to really quantify the costs of all these different actions. As we're talking to different organizations about the plan, this financial plan's being tweaked a little bit. But the basic costs are here and these are costs that would occur over 20 plus year period. And not all these actions may be taken, for example, not all the acquisitions may occur so that not everything that's in this financial plan may not, everything in this financial plan may not actually require funding because that action may not be taken. But the state wants us to quantify everything, which is what we've done. So where do we head from here? We've been obviously meeting with you today. We met with the redevelopment authority last week, the Citizens Advisory Committee earlier this week. And with every meeting, we, I'm sorry, may seem a bit elastic, but with every meeting, we get input and make adjustments as necessary. There was another key parcel that was added after we met with the Citizens Advisory Committee. So we're tightening it up and we're getting ready for the formal approval process, which will include a public hearing by City Council, City Council Approval, Planning Board, final approval to make sure it's consistent with these other planning documents that we have incorporated into the plan. And then the final approval is with the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And while that process, the state goes through their review process, we will also be preparing a MIPA document, which is a state permitting document. For any urban renewal plan, it's usually not a major issue. It's just putting on record that there is an urban renewal plan and it gives the public yet another opportunity to comment on it. But it's more of a checkbox we need to check off at that point. So with that, it's the end of our presentation and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Council Perez or Council Govan?
Thank you so much. Thank you for that presentation. I'm wondering, when I hear urban renewal, it scares me because, you know, we have, we live in an urban area, of course, and I wonder how many people are going to be displaced. You know, because of this plan, I know you guys have been talking about it for a while. I'm new to the council, so I'm just coming on board, but it's, you know, just concerning to me, is there going to be any affordable housing being replaced by market rate housing? Right now, my friend actually just moved downtown onto Lyman Street into the luxury apartments, which are not luxury apartments, although she's paying luxury rent. You know, there's a lot of, you know, things that just don't, don't match, I guess you could say. So those are my questions and my concerns. You know, it's, of course, it's wonderful and it's great. We would love to see our downtown area be more vibrant and I want to stay accessible and affordable for the residents that live in the city of Springfield or that want to continue to live in the city of Springfield because I feel like, you know, we don't want to be pushing people out of our city because we want them to live here, you know? I would love to see our teachers be able to afford to live downtown, you know, in those apartments. There are some, you know, single teachers or just couples who might want, you know, to have just a condo or something like that to live, but they need to be able to afford it based on the salary that they get from the city and the school department. So that's my question. I don't know if there's an answer to that, but that's what I, my comments.
Council, let me take a couple of pieces of that and answer sequentially. First and foremost, there's no intent of actually doing any acquisition associated with a structure that has significant housing within it, within the plan area. So in terms of relocating people from their home, that's, that's not the intent or focus of the plan. The plan is actually focused on those areas predominantly that are either vacant properties, underutilized properties or parking lots. And looking at the adaptive reuse of the, of properties that have, as all of you know, this particular area of the city has many historic treasures in terms of the architecture of some of the buildings that are within this plan area. The, the plan itself is exceedingly responsive to encouraging adaptive reuse of those properties. And only if it can be made evident to the SRA that there's no economic feasibility associated with the redevelopment of those properties. Will there be any conversation with regards to demolition of any significant historic property in the plan area? And that's actually referenced within the plan. So that's really guiding the, the development community that the intent of the city with regards to, to looking at redevelopment here in, in many ways is, you know, looking at adaptive reuse of those historic structures. The, yeah, obviously, that's not necessarily the same thing with regards to vacant lots in terms of, as you know, in the blast zone area, there are significant lots that just remain vacant lots or they have, you know, parking associated with them in, in some areas as well. You know, surface parking isn't the highest and best use of our most critical resource, which is land area. You know, so bringing development to those areas that more efficiently and more efficiently laying out parking to service the, the potential development is a critical part of the plan as well. I hope that answered some of your questions.
It did. Thank you. And then based on that, another question popped into my mind regarding the possibility of creating more affordable housing. And again, when I say affordable housing, I don't mean low income housing. I mean affordable housing for the teachers, for example, that live here.
The, the plan looks to be responsive to providing housing at all demand levels. One of the issues right now, currently, 90% of the housing inventory that's in the downtown is subsidized to some degree. So, you know, what the plan suggests is ultimately that we, the, we encourage development that's responsive to creating more of a housing inventory at all levels of the demand, whether it be affordable housing, high-end housing, middle income housing, workforce housing. But, you know, that, that's, that's what makes a successful transit oriented development when you have diversity of income and different product within the market.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tim. That was very helpful. Thank you. I'll let Council Perez go.
Council Perez.
Yes, I just want to emphasize that as being part of this advisory committee, Councilor Govan, that was one of my biggest concern. I always have been advocating for, for workforce housing. And I think that the group was centered to that area. Working as a housing director that I worked at the New North Citizen Council and seeing the need, always advocating for that fact. So I think by being part of this advisory committee, I was always concerned with the issue of affordable housing and workforce housing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Actually, I just wanted to just throw in a comment that I'm certainly no expert on it, on any of these issues, but to the point that Council Govan and Council Maria Perez are concerned about the housing and I, the term that what hasn't been used is usually gentrification, but the housing stock downtown can create more opportunities and a lot of times, as we all know, and many of may already know, depends on the funding source for the development. These older buildings can be developed that are vacant if we feel, if they created the upper floors into apartments. Depending on the funding source will determine the ratio of market rate versus affordable housing. And it would all, a lot of that depends on how, what the funding source for the development is. But the potential for, there's a need for housing across the city on all levels, market rate as well as low income and affordable or workforce development, regardless of the adjectives to describe the type of housing. But this plan, at least in my opinion, suggests that there's a great opportunity for what I used to call factory chic. And that's the repurposing of these factory buildings into what younger people this would, you know, think are really cool housing opportunities. I had a opportunity about six years ago to take a tour Coltsville down in Hartford and saw how they were able to transform those industrial buildings into a mixed use of commercial and residential properties. And it is quite, quite impressive. And I don't see why many of these buildings, similarly to the Wiley's Building, deservingly of all the recognition they get, it is market rate. But that type of redesign incorporated throughout many of those industrial buildings would be a benefit to the community, regardless of income level. And that's just my thoughts, but is there anybody else that had anything that they needed to offer? I had one other question, perhaps of Miss Pham, if nobody else had any. And there was two actually. One was the SRA is being empowered with and is obviously a very useful partner with the city. Is there a more significant role that the SRA could utilize to increase employment opportunities in the construction trades, the redevelopment trades? And not, you know, big fan of labor, but, but just the idea of labor over the past decade, if it worked really hard to increase the opportunities for women and to work in construction trades because those trades are livable wages. No disrespect to the CNAs or to the commercial workers who service our hamburgers and hot dogs, but they generally can't afford to buy homes or have the option to buy homes and, you know, deliver a high standard working to the shop. But in the construction, the trades they do, is there a tool or way for the SRA as they're putting out bids, as they're doing, having these types of conversations to reemphasize the need for the developers to be hiring locally? And, and having those dollars kind of circulate in our community more efficient.
Sure. Well, the SRA Board is just as passionate, I think, as the council and the city in that respect. For the redeveloper obligations within the plan amendment, we actually added Springfield resident and women, minority veteran disabled or disadvantaged business enterprise efforts within. You know, I know there's constraints with respect to goals, but it's definitely something that they will emphasize when dealing with a redeveloper. So we've added that language here and we try to do our best at every step of procurement on the SRA side. Whether or not it's a small service contract or, you know, other elements or supplies being purchased at Union Station, we're always thinking of that.
Thank you. That's.
If I may, I, I think the best way to look at it is that the urban renewal plan itself puts the development community on notice that this is a, an important issue that's going to be looked at in terms of proposals coming forward. But it's also an issue that we can follow up on in terms of actual enforcement of it in the, in the contracts that we ultimately have with the, the redevelopers.
Okay, I assume that we'll probably have more conversations and I will at least, you know, appreciate an opportunity to get more knowledgeable about those particular details. The other question I had is, it referenced many of this, this, these properties are historic. You know, they're 100 years old or more. And, you know, the definition or the perception of what one person might think of as being worth saving for historic reasons versus somebody else's perception that it's just an old building, it needs to go. I mean, is there, is there, is there a significant, has there been any conversation about how to find the proper balance between that? Because I, I, I hear from both sides, those who would like, I mean, I used the Kittredge Building, for example. There was an opportunity to tear it down, build something there, and then some of the historic people got involved and talked about his historic significance. And in my perfect world, that building gets torn down and that becomes a new courthouse. And actually becomes the new public safety complex where you put the fire station, I mean, the police station and the courthouse together on that one huge site once that building is razed. On that one huge site and once that building is raised. Is there any of those types? How do you find that balance between those who would preserve every historically aged building and those who. Kind of recognize the need for, I guess, something a little bit more progressive architecturally. Good question.
Discussion, it comes down to the economics ultimately, you know. If, if the private market through subsidy and everything else can't ultimately. Engage with the redevelopment of a property because the economic return after they've made the investment. There is no economic return. That's, that's scalable. Then the market's not going to undertake that project. And what we have indicated in terms of getting to that balance counselor is you have to prove to us. Not just say that it's, it's economically infeasible. You have to give us. An analysis of, of the you, the intended use and ultimately determine economically. That that use can't be redeveloped and create the return necessary in order to effectuate the development. So from my perspective, the, the, these questions really come down to, you know, economics. Of the redevelopment project. But obviously, we, we have put the development community on notice through the plan. That historic preservation and adaptive reuse of properties that have had a, a, a historic designation. Or over a hundred years old are critically important. To the city and that, you know, i- if there is contemplation. Around demolition of a property that has that type of designation. Then we, the developer needs to prove to us that that property cannot be redeveloped.
Well, thank you. Do any of our guests or either of my colleagues have any other questions?
Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, thank you. Everybody for your time and very informative. Obviously, this is our second one. This will come back to the committee of the whole. I, I, I welcome you guys to be prepared to. Present again and to my colleagues who are not here in the committee of the whole and be prepared for their questions. I think this is very informative. The presentation that we saw today, I know it's a little bit expansive. Has that been forwarded or is it a possibility that be forwarded to the entire council? For review if they choose to before the next meeting?
I actually provided it to Kelly earlier this morning. She was going to share it.
I mean, can you just update the counselors as to what we're looking at, at, or what we're moving forward with in terms of the website for the, the plan itself?
Yeah, so we are working on getting a court square urban renewal. Page on the SRA's page where the public can comment if they have questions or concerns. Also, they can take a look at the draft document that should be live in the next few days. And then I also wanted to mention there is a public hearing. That, that goes with your approval of the plan. So that should be forthcoming and I. I'll work with Counselor Edwards. On what that looks like if you're comfortable moving forward or timing of that. I know everyone's busy.
Okay. And the final thing then would be. That is a possibility of having a link on the city's web. It's sometimes it gets a little complicated for people to try to access information. So asking somebody to talk about an urban renewal plan through the SRA, which people don't even know whether or not you're part of the city. Is it, could it be simply added into the, what is it, the?
The homepage?
Yes, the homepage of the city website is, it'd make it a lot easier for my colleagues. You know, Counsel Gobain and Perez and myself to redirect people. If you go to the cities, because that's my, always my thing, you know, go to the city's website, go to the city's website. But I don't usually, you know, I'm not, I don't get to decide what's put there and how easily access it is. But if, if there's a link on there, they could redirect people to it that may have questions on it. I think that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, and I've made sure there's a link at the economic development site as well to link you back to the Springfield redevelopment authority.
So and as we said, counselors, there's some stakeholder meetings that are coming up. So obviously, you know, our next meeting with you, we will have digested commentary that's coming out of those meetings. So I, I think we, we've done a, a, a pretty good job in terms of public engagement associated with the plan thus far. So.
So this question is for Counsel Perez. You're a member of this committee. Do you feel that we should, as a committee, be making a recommendation back to the committee of the whole? Or should we just present it back as an informational, I mean. Are, not to put you on the spot, but are you, what are your thoughts? Should we, we do, your, your presence in mine constitutes a. A quorum of the committee. So would you like for us to make? A recommendation one way or the other, or just allow for the presentation process to continue?
I think at this point, I recommend for the presentation process to continue. So we could see here from all the counselors at this point. If they have any other questions and concern. So when we do the presentation, we have cover all those areas at this point.
Okay, fair enough. Everybody, thank you very much, Amanda, and to our other guests, Tim. And my colleagues on the council, thank you very much for taking the time. And I certainly walk away from this meeting smarter than I started. So thank you very much sincerely. And with the uptick of COVID, please be safe, keep your family safe. And my prayers and go out to all our family and friends who are now dealing with the latest uptick. Thank you very much for your time and everybody enjoy this beautiful day.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Okay, thank you.